I would like to call the meeting order, and if everybody could stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Here.
David Wade.
Here.
Green Dudo.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Molly King.
Here.
Mary Ann Muesner.
Here.
Denise Wheeler.
Here.
Is there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Uh, yes, there is one change. On your, on the dais, I put a new copy of the swim team agreement. If you turn to the page that says Appendix B, there was a lifeguard rate change that did not get updated when we did the legislative form in the final copy. It says sixteen fifty, it should be seventeen dollars. Thank you to a counselor for sending us a message today so we can make that change.
Perfect. Thank you. Looks like on our consent agenda, we have four items: approval of reg- regular session minutes, ratifying twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four city manager evaluation, approval of oil, CC liquor license application, and authorizing agreements between City of La Grande and the high school swim team. Is there any of these may be polled, or do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Nope. Perfect. All right. This will be our point for, of our meeting where we are going to have public comments. All comments are anything that is not on the agenda for this evening. If we can keep our comments to three minutes, that'd be great. And this is the time to speak. If you have something to say versus that anything that is on the agenda. You could please write your name and address on the sheet. That'd be great.
Thank you. First of all, I thank the city for the SOD grants that Community Kindness has received in the future. We've had help. I say that ahead of time because we're, I am very frustrated and very angry with the lack of extension of the street scape on straight, the streetscape on Adams Avenue, especially with the fact that we are now moving towards, or it's being considered to invest in Jefferson Avenue, or Je- yeah. I'm really frustrated with that. The existing businesses that are part of that area that hasn't been extended, we believe, I believe we deserve some attention and things to help us continue to, to do our business, help us get unified with the rest of Adams Avenue, this end that looks beautiful, to be honest. And we're being pushed out of that way, and we're not getting encouragement to get people down there with that help. But now, we're going to consider, or this, the city are considering, look, try to get other investments or other businesses in on the outline area. Well, why can't we take care of the businesses that we hear right now? Timothy Bishop came and met with me because of my concerns. He highlighted the problems that we, that exist between Elm and farther east on Adams, and it was the first time I'd heard that problem. He talked about the types of businesses, the curb breaks for parking lots and entrances to the banks, and, and he gave me all these problems that we have down there that we can't extend the street scape. That's the first time I've ever heard of that. Why didn't somebody come and say, hey, these are some of the problems, what can we do to fix it? Why isn't the city trying to, and maybe they are, but why are we not hearing about why we're trying to solve those problems? Downtown is very broken up. Adams Avenue, at least, as I talk about this, is broken up. We've got the nice streetscaping that was done, things that are farther west, I know they have their problems, and there, and then we have us, I'm talking about Community Kindness on thirteen fifteen Adams Avenue, Adams and Fur, and it looks like a ghost town at Christmas time in the dark. There's, there's hardly nothing there. It looks beautiful when you look this side. We're all broken up. And now, if we're going to work on Jefferson, we're going to break it up even more. We're going to do a little bit here, we're going to do a little bit there, we're going to ignore this, we're not going to solve those problems. I'm really frustrated with this situation. I've had, one of the counselors said that that was one of her drives that she wanted to accomplish. She's one voice, I understand that, and I don't doubt that she is still trying. I'd like to make one more point, sorry.
If you can be brief, because I give everybody three minutes, so I try to keep everybody at that.
Very brief. We, we attempted to install garbage cans and seats that were left over from the streetscape. We were going to pay for it, it was going to be your equipment, your sidewalks, and we were going to be required to cur- to provide liability insurance for that. That squashed that. I was even to try and spend our money, and we can't do that. That, that seemed really unfair. Thank you.
Excuse me, can you also say your name for the record?
Sorry. My name's Grant Meyer, from Community Kindness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Is there anybody else?
Yes.
My name is Catherine Bola, six nine four three nine Common Lane in Cove. I live in Cove, but I was a longtime La Grande resident. And I was the chair of the design committee for La Grande Main Street from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen. I was the chair during the development of the Big H project, which is the original new streetscape project. It's hard to believe that it's been there for over ten years now, because I think everybody just accepts it as part of the downtown, and I think we may take it for granted a little bit. But I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for how that project came about and what our aspirations for that project was, were. The project grew out of a desire to make the downtown more attractive in the summertime because it just baked. And a lot of people, including me, would just not go downtown because it was so unpleasant. So the Big H Streetscape Project evolved from that. It was called the Big H because it was a demonstration project that was one corner, and, you know, so one way on Adams and another way on Depot, and so it turned out to be an H. But the intent was to have a demonstration project that then we could extend both ways on Adams. We didn't think we could go all the way to Island Avenue because of infrastructure issues, but it was always intended to continue that way. And I think we should do it. I think it, it has, as Brett was saying, there is, there's this real disconnect between this end of town and that end of town, and people notice it. And people don't go there because it's unattractive. There isn't much retail down there, but still, it does. Our commu- our downtown looks really chopped up and awful. I think the streetlights also make people feel safer in that it's more pedestrian-friendly at the, at the lighting level. And it, I just, it breaks my heart to see us not continue with that. We spent two years of the design committee meeting, if not every two, or if not every week, every two weeks. We had a whole bunch of really dedicated volunteers, put an immense amount of time and energy. The city committed a lot of money, a lot of time. Anderson Perry was the engineer. So it was not just a foo-foo fluffy project. It was really an investment in the downtown, and I would strongly support that. The city council also support the extension of that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Jake Severt, six zero zero four two Wright Road, La Grande. Just wanting to get in front of the counselors again tonight and the mayor. Thank you for having us. Thank you, guests, for showing up. As you know, I am a commissioner candidate for position three, that'd be Donna Beveridge's position. I've been working really hard, trying to attend a lot of city council meetings, trying to get involved and learn about the issues that we face, not only in La Grande, but around the county as well. So again, just introducing myself. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We will move into our main part of the meeting. Looks like this evening are, if I find my left area. Public hearings, we have none. Unfinished, unfinished business, we have none. We do have new business. Looks like our first one will be approving expenditures of general reserve funds for a secure impound lot. With that, can we have the staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. During, I believe it was council comments, Chief Bill kind of highlighted the situation that we have been dealing with in terms of impounding primarily non-functional travel trailers, RVs, local towing company that has been towing those and then storing them for the required impound period, and then the city is, is paying for that and then paying for the disposal, but they're no longer willing to continue to store them for a variety of reasons. I think the chief did a nice job of kind of highlighting the whys behind that. And so, we looked at a number of, of options and alternatives and landed on taking some city-owned property that's currently part of the Polo Club lease out immediately behind BNK, and installing security fencing, graveling a portion of that area, so, and then privacy slating and wiring the top, top of the chain link fence, and creating a secure area that we could then store those types of vehicles immediately before having them disposed of at the end of the thirty-day impound period. One of the things that we did not have identified when we were visiting you is kind of what we think the cost is going to be. The cost that we have landed on is somewhere between one hundred and thirty-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It's a pretty significant investment, but it is something that we have got to have a solution for. As the council is aware, we have annually for several years put dollars away into a general reserve fund for future capital improvements. Most recently, we had used some of those dollars towards the library roof. We budget three hundred thousand dollars each year in the event that we have some capital need that we have to meet. And so, because we have that money appropriated in the budget under that line, we don't have to go through any special budgeting process, but the understanding with the council is that we would come to you if we were going to expend any of those funds to get your approval and blessing. So the action item that you have before you is to allow us to expend reserve funds to complete this project. There's a companion item with this, which is to amend the Polo Club lease to remove that footprint from their lease, and we'll talk about that one when we get to the next agenda item. And I'm happy to answer whatever questions, or punt to Kyle or to the chief.
I'm just really disappointed that, you know, we have this problem. And is there, do you think there's any hope of recouping some of the expenses to the city of, of storing this over time? I mean, I, it sounds like these improvements would be long-term improvements. This is something that the city can use for years to come, but I guess I'm just wondering, you know, is there any hope of recouping some of this from the offending parties here?
Possibly if we have someone, where someone were to come and claim the, the vehicle back, we could charge them impound fee, have them pay the towing bill. I think where the, I think where the tangible way that we would recoup some of the dollars is we are currently paying those storage fees. So we would continue to pay the towing, but we would not be paying the storage fees for them, as the private party would not be doing that. So that will be a cost savings. It will take a long time and a lot of vehicles to get anywhere close to the investment. But as you point out, it, it does give us a storage lot we have control over that potentially we could look at doing other things with in the future. But it, it solves an immediate problem. You know, we can't just let them stay on the, on the city streets, so unfortunately, we do need to make this investment, and this is kind of where we are.
I have a question. I understand the need of it, because we, we need it, obviously, because the company is not doing it anymore for us. I have a bizarre question, actually. Why does it have to be gravelled? Because that's a lot of money, and we, I kind of live on a gravel little driveway, and you have to keep putting gravel, and it's a constant thing. Why can't it just be dirt?
You have rules that you have to abide by.
For.
At storage units.
Really?
Yes, because all those towing companies have to do the same thing.
But, I was gonna say, because it's.
Because you have vehicles that are leaking and everything else.
They don't have gravel where that's at.
Yeah, it's, it's in the land development code. If we're going to develop this site for this storage purpose, we have to have gravel or asphalt. And as you know, gravel is a little cheaper than asphalt.
How big of an area are you talking about?
It is, Kyle, what's the square footage?
Do you need that much room?
We do.
What do you, okay, what do you do with these vehicles that are not claimed or anything? What are we going to do with them after?
They get disposed of and dismantled, and we have to pay a fee.
And we have to pay to have that done, too?
Because they're really essentially junk, and that's why they're abandoned. And there's no salvage value in them, like there would be perhaps if it were just a car. So there, it's just, it's a disposal with wasteful.
Have, have we ever tried to sell them? I mean, just, I mean, some people like the old ones that will fix them up.
They're not that kind of fix-up-able. If, if there was value to them, they would be, the, the person that has possession of it would be selling it.
Okay.
Is my speculation, but these are, these are literally not, there's no value to them.
How long do we have to keep them before you can dispose of them?
Thirty days in a change. Yeah, thirty days.
I think one thing everybody needs to think about, these vehicles they're discussing, they're vehicles that the people that actually own them do not have them in their name. So you have no way to go after the ownership because there's, there's no way of proving who the owner is. They are probably the worst things to see inside that these people are dealing with. I don't deal with them, so I'm going to talk on this. But I do know the nature of it, and with the questions you guys are asking, it is a big nuisance to our city. It's to the people that are dealing with them, the police chief. It is unresponsible citizens that have these vehicles are not taken care of, and now it's put onto the city to do it. Unfortunately, this is a lot of money, but this is a way of addressing the issue.
Well, I agree with that, but, and we were forced to keep them for thirty days.
Yes, because we can't dispose of them until that, the end of that time period. And trust me, you're having the same type of conversations that we had at the staff level months ago. All good questions, because we already asked them.
All right.
All right.
I'd like to say one thing to answer. Mr. Mayor and councilors, Councilor Glaib, you asked about the recouping of the costs. I think City Manager Stroke touched on it, but I'd like to give you some specifics. We're paying currently and have been for, I don't know, five to six years consistently, annually more than $5,000, around $6,000 a year just for the storage. So, those costs, like City Manager Stroke, are going to be saved because we won't be incurring that cost to the city any longer by doing this. So, yes, it will take some time, but over time, we will save that money.
All right. With that, I will invite public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter in the public? Go ahead, sir.
I'm sitting here brainstorming mine. I didn't realize I got a chance to talk. Is there a way you could take the cars that are being towed and stored, that they could also be stored there to save some more money? That's just a thought.
Those are actually dealt with with a different way.
Oh, okay.
These are just for travel trailers, is what we're discussing.
But why couldn't we put the... And not pay storage someplace else for those cars?
I'll let the chief touch on that.
Okay.
That's a good and a fair question, but here's the thing. We... The police department currently has a contract with a couple of local tow providers to tow passenger vehicles. It really is an entirely different game, if you will. A lot of those vehicles do get claimed by owners, and the ones that don't, there is typically value. Oftentimes, I'm speaking to the mayor that knows this information intimately, but I want to speak as if it isn't your business. But here's the thing, is the cost to get rid of those is directly tied to the cost of metals. And so, oftentimes, the tow providers are able to... If the vehicle is of value, they can sell it at auction. They could potentially take it, you know, for scrap and recoup some of their costs incurred to tow and store the vehicle. But the reality is, there's a lot of those vehicles, and the city is really not interested in being involved in that if we don't have to be. And we're not incurring that cost like we are for RVs and boats that have no value because this all came about a number of years ago where we started seeing more RVs. And it's not just in La Grande, it's cities all over the state of Oregon that the tow companies are basically saying, "We don't want to play" because they were having... They were towing these under city ordinance on behest of the city of La Grande, and then they were stuck with that. And in other words, they would come and tow the vehicle, and it would cost them. And so, I understand it's not fair to them and a private business. But the passenger vehicles, you know, that's still an entirely different thing. So, we're not interested in storing those vehicles in this location. Hopefully, that helps.
Real quick, quick moment. On those vehicles that get taken out, typically, their value is $200. So, originally, we have our original tow out of that, which is 100. That's our agreed rate with the city to tow that the customer pays for. And then, we have to re-tow it, so then we have two tow's. So, there's our $200 that we have to store this vehicle for 30 days. Majority of the time, we're actually doing it, you know, a service for the city for free by helping keeping these vehicles cleaned up. So, if you take that away from the companies, I don't think you're going to have many companies doing it for you. But that's just a brief one. I'm not going to go far into it.
Helps me understand.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any more public comments? Counselor discussion.
Just hold my nose and...
Motion.
I move that the city manager be authorized to expend general reserve funds to create the secure storage facility as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more additional counselor discussion before I ask for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. We will move on to considering approval of new Polo ground lease agreement. With that, can we have the staff report, Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I mentioned in the previous one, the location for the impound lot is currently under the control of the Polo Club as part of the lease with the city. Entered into the lease back in, I believe it was 1999. They did quite a bit of improvements out there, and they have an active Polo field. Adjacent to that, there's a fenced-in couple of apartments. One is the one at the very end by Pierce that we're going to convert into the city's lot. We'll do a land use change to take that out of that ownership to a separate lot parcel so that we don't have to try to figure out the tax bills because the Polo Club pays the taxes every year. Then it makes it very clean. In the draft agreement, you'll see that we have put together an annual fee that escalates over the life of the agreement. There's also much expanded indemnification language that was added and also an insurance requirement that was not clear in the form of lease. We cleaned the language up, and then we'll have to attach the legal description once we get it surveyed, but that will also be an attachment to show exactly what the footprint is. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, how much are they paying now for the lease?
They are paying... It's $200 a year, and then they also pay the taxes.
So... And I noticed this is going to be 300, so that's counting the loss of the property, then?
We're just updating. It's not a huge percentage loss of the property.
They're going to pay less taxes, too, because...
They'll pay a little bit less in taxes, but we also, you know... This is not one of those things where we're trying to make a lot of money off of this because it does generate some economic activity. It's nice to have. That is an asset in the community. You know, this is more of a partnership, but leaving it at $200 a year, it made sense to kind of have an escalator in there. So, that's what we plugged in.
And the Polo Club was agreeable?
They were.
Thank you, Robert. At this time, we'd like to invite public comments on this matter. Sure, there's none. Counselor discussion.
I thought the language was a little bit interesting, and I understand this is more applicable to farming practices, but it's a good and husband-like manner.
Yeah, right.
In accordance with any accepted farming practices in County Oregon, I'm thinking, what is the Polo Club doing farming that way? So, I'm surprised that one, you know, flew past the attorney, but I guess it's standard language.
There were a couple of attorneys that were involved in the original crafting of the lease and a couple that took a look at it for the revision.
Okay. They can have grain storage silo on the end.
I believe there's one there now.
Okay. All right.
I guess the reason is that way is because it is considered farmland.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's farm.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of interesting terms of art in that.
Yes, I know. I read that, too.
Hopefully, they'll maintain it in a husband-like manner.
There is no more counselor discussion. A motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to finalize and sign a new lease agreement with the La Grande Polo Club as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope. All right. Union County Commissioner update. Good evening, Commissioner Scarf.
Yes, good evening, mayor and councilors. I apologize for missing last month's meeting. A few things that happened here this month. Last county commissioner we had, we actually lifted the burn ban in the county, and today we actually lifted the fire restrictions in the county as well. I'm not saying go out there and burn everything you got because it is still very dry conditions, and this wind is not helping. We still have some fires popping up around the county. Some L camps are burning up, some things. We do need some moisture, so if you do feel that it's safe, the wind's not burning, you could burn your burn barrels in the county or your fire pits. I'm going to hold off until we get a little bit more moisture. I know it's getting colder and darker, but I still think it's... Our guys are pretty tired from the summer, so let's be safe when we start torching off all of our debris and whatnot. We did sign a contract with Pinnacle Research to look at doing a respite detox center here in Union County. We're using our opioid funds for that. The county, as you know, the county and the city have received opioid settlement funds, and we felt that in the county, this would be very, very beneficial to us. In the interim, we've been offered beds in Baker County, which we are looking at to contracting with them in the interim. The sheriff, the district attorney, the court system, the jail, and the CHD, we've been working together on this, and hopefully, we could make some good use out of these opioid funds in the future. This research will help me come this next session in Salem to hopefully get some funding to either build or revamp a structure here in the county that could help us with our opioid and drug addiction constituents here in the county. And I went to legislative days last week in Salem. I am still pushing the fair funding for the wastewater project. Salem's going to look a little bit different this year because we had a really good... I'm sorry. We had a turnover rate of legislators, and we have new ones coming in, a lot of them old ones going out. January's going to look a lot different, and I'm going to have to go introduce myself to a lot of new senators and representatives, which is not a problem with me. But a lot of the old ones still, when I knocked on their door, number one thing was, "How have you not been funded for this yet?", which is just very, very frustrating to me. With the cold weather and everything, it's been fantastic. We've had some really great events here lately. The Celebrate La Grande was awesome, the middle school ribbon cutting, the hospital ribbon cutting. Oktoberfest just happened, homecoming's coming up. It's, you know, it's... I love this time of year. We have a lot of things going on, and I know the mayor, you and I have been at almost all of those this last month, and the hospital and the middle school is fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to go up and check out them, I really would. Actually, I don't think you can anymore at the hospital. Actually, and I wouldn't recommend it because the only way to check them out now is...
To your patients.
Yeah, if you're going to get surgery.
I don't think they open until the end of October.
Well, maybe you can sneak in, Marion. I don't know.
Well, I already did. I already...
Oh, yeah, you were there. I saw you. I saw you. It was fantastic. And the forward thinking on that was really, really great.
It was awesome.
And with that, I really don't have anything else unless you guys have any questions or anything.
No, just keep plugging away with that fair.
Yeah, I'm going to...
And you're awesome.
And yeah, thank you. Representative Levy, I just spoke with her today, and it's still her number one. And the Oregon Fairness Association, that's going to be one of their top priorities as well.
Excellent.
And I'm really going to push the needs and wants of legislation because this is not a want, it's a need. And a lot of the legislative capital construction projects are wants that I'm seeing money going towards. Like, we all want a sports complex. Do we need a sports complex?
Do we need toilets? Yes.
We need running water, especially for our fairgrounds. It's not just our fairgrounds, it's our residency hub, our emergency area we'll go to when there's fires, and so... There's nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you. Staff comments. Is there any staff that would like to approach and make comment?
Well, Saturday was a chili cook-off, and we made a pretty good presentation.
Or not yet.
Oh, sorry.
I'm glad you're eager.
We can hire you, Molly.
Good job, Molly. Any of the city staff that would like to make a comment? Now is that time, please.
Is it appropriate to ask city staff a question of the staff?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Sorry. Yes, ma'am. And no city staff. City manager.
Couple things. You should have received the monthly report, sent that out earlier today. My goal is always to get it to you before the council meeting, and we did. The... Just some calendar notes as a reminder. We do have some work sessions scheduled for October. One is on the 21st, and that will be the ATV, UTV on city street conversation. On the 28th, we're going to actually combine a couple topics, really kind of three topics, really. We have the foreclosure ordinance that we want to amend the city code to make it a little clearer that when we have an abatement situation where, as we did with one of our streets, where we had to spend thousands of dollars to abate a nuisance, be able to trigger a foreclosure action on the property. So, we'll talk about that. And then revisions to the city's procurement ordinance. We've got a very outdated procurement ordinance, procurement ordinance, and we're going to use the LOC model ordinance for that, and we'll talk to you about that a little bit. And then also just kind of talk about the fact that the way that we are going to adopt that ordinance, it's the first time that we're going to be changing the city code, so the format for that ordinance is going to be a little bit different than what you're accustomed to. So, we just kind of wanted to explain that during that work session because you'll see those in November. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Robert. Ms. Molly? Now is that time.
Well, chili cook-off took off or was on Saturday, and it was a really good turnout, and Justin, Mary, and I, we did our best. We didn't get recognized for honorable mention or anything, but it was a lot of fun. Public Works was there as well.
And they didn't win either.
I wasn't going to say that, but yeah.
I had to.
It was fun. I think we all had a great time.
Maybe if they'd have known we were going to donate the prize money to the streets, it would have been different.
Yeah.
I just have to say, Robert, I won't be here for the 22nd meeting and possibly not the 28th.
The 21st meeting and the 28th.
Yeah, whatever they are in October. Yeah. That's all I had. Oh, well, wait. I have to remind you that Main Street Halloween trick-or-treat will be coming up.
Oh, yes, it is.
Okay. And if anybody wants to have a booth or have... Bring something downtown that's not in the Main Street area, get ahold of Main Street.
I thank you guys because that is amazing. That keeps the kids so much safer. I mean, it's a really good program, and we all thank you very much for doing it.
Oh, the other thing, I did attend the senior center meeting, board meeting, and they're having Halloween, too, but they're doing it the week before at... The weekend before, at Riviera. So, if anybody wants to go to that, go out to Riviera.
Any other counselor?
I would just mention, you know, for the benefit of the public, the ballot measure that will be coming up for this next election, just, you know, to be aware that one of them is a council-initiated ballot measure regarding how the city council elections take place. And we would just encourage people, I think, to review that and, you know, vote as they deem fit, but understand that I think our hope and reasoning there was to not only simplify the elections that occur to the city council, but also, I think, our hope is that it will change the tone of those elections to hopefully allow a little more focus on substance. So, just a reminder there.
Perfect. Well, I actually have a couple proclamations I would like to read real quick, and after that, we'll get out of here. First one. I, Justin B. Rock, Mayor of La Grande, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024, to be extra mile day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in the efforts and commitment to make this... Their organizations, families, community, county, and world a better place. Then I got one more. I, Justin B. Rock, Mayor of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in our city. And with that, I think everybody else kind of hit what I was going to hit on, but we are adjourned. Thank you.